Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, October 26, 2021. Council will be meeting in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue registering and speaking virtually as there will be a limited number of seats available in our council chambers. Our first order of business is public comment. Now I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council and profanity will not be permitted. Please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Let's know if you're next.
Oh, please.
No, I have to go.
Okay.
Order of business.
Please?
Please just move.
Yes, I'll be delighted to.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belts over in the Hill, Global Intelligence Society candidate for mayor, 2021, globalintelligencesociety.org. We are intending to maximize good information verified by three different sources and minimize bad intelligence avoided by ideological assumptions. All of my PC control items are documented in the public records, 2010 to 2020. Concern of Pittsburgh council, the politically Democratic Party dominated city council is power, the political control of the actions of one individual or institution of another. We usually say yes to the exercise of power by elected officials when use of office conforms to office norms like choosing the best qualified people regardless of race, ethnicity, or sex, gen, identity. We not unusually say no when abuse does not conform to those norms like choosing people based on race, ethnicity, sex, gen, or party affiliation. This is corruption. What will happen on November the 2nd? My participation in public affairs in or out of office regardless of November the 2nd is to maximize choice and minimize coercion echoing citizen Naomi Mullen to gain and/or regain control of as much government for the people of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, the United States. One, control of our vote, votes, getting a paper copy or receipt of our individual vote. For some of us, that may mean non-DP, DP, RP candidates, you may need to write us in. Two, control of citizen's speech, securing speech in public comment at local government meetings from censorship like this absurd anti-profanity, non-rule, non-list that is continually offered by Mr. Lovell and by Ms. Kell Smith and anybody else who's in charge. And secondly, sequestering speech into new public free speech zones, control of individuals' sex, gen, identity, control of pre-university education by creating an alternative to the Pittsburgh Public Schools with nine separate districts that are headed by counselors, control of Pittsburgh political empowerment by funding Native American, Latin, Asian, European, and not just Black, African-American Pittsburgh political empowerment projects. Both Lovell and Burgess are resistant, and control of Pittsburgh city's borders by scanning for microbes, fungi, and nanoparticles.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Hello?
Not up yet, Ricky.
Yes, we can hear you.
You can hear me? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ronald Miller, for your support. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. The pencil, there's a lot of noise in the background. Could I start again? Hello? Hello? Please respond. I'd like to have my full three minutes. Hello?
Can the members in the room hear us who are joining on Zoom?
Pardon me?
Naomi, this is Councilwoman Strasburger. I am trying to clarify whether the people in the room can hear us who are joining on Zoom. It sounds like they might not be able to hear us right now.
Okay, yeah, there's an awful lot of disturbance in the background. May I have the floor?
Just bear with us, Ms. Mullen. We're having some technical difficulties that we're trying to fix here in chambers.
Okay.
He thinks he knows everything, you know? Bobby, he still thinks he's the president.
Are we still waiting on speak?
Ludwig, it's good to see you, man. Welcome back. Haven't seen you for a while.
Hello, may I have my turn? Hello?
That's fine. I see another familiar face. How you doing? How's your mother doing?
I believe they're still working out their technical difficulties, Naomi.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Make sure.
Wait, yeah, she was talking, but we couldn't hear her. They're trying to fix it.
But, uh, fellowship, but, uh, joy divine. That's what we do at church. Whenever there's a pause, it'll strike over him. I'll reach the mast. I can't sing, but I know all the hymns.
So what we're going to do while we try to fix the audio for those who have called in to speak, we're going to take anyone in chambers who wishes to speak before council. So is there anyone in city chambers who wishes to speak before council? Mr. Ludwig, this will be your time.
A pleasure to be back again. Well, my name is Les Ludwig. 6589 Rosemar Street in Squirrel Hill. I've been a candidate for mayor three times. And you'll say, well, jeez, what the hell brings you back this time? Simply the fact that there's a tremendous need, and it's not going to be met by any of the other candidates. How many people have said, "My neighborhood's being ignored. All the money's budgeted. How can anyone do anything for us?" I'm the guy who said, "MBRO, raise money." Money that comes not from taxes so that a mayor can do some good by taking that money and applying it where the problems of this city are. And you know where those problems are. I was part of those problems for 20 years as a businessman at 1707 Bedford Avenue, the August Wilson block of the city. And I didn't forget what I saw when I ended up and moved them into more profitable ways of living. One of them was Jimmy Anderson, and Jimmy became literally manager of a Giant Eagle in Homewood when it still existed. He was my first employee, my first hire. Now let's look at this letter that you've all received. I was at I was at Miracle Weir in Monroeville and Chip Purcell from Enviro 21 literally was screaming bloody murder that the city is overpaying $75 a load every time that a packer goes to the landfill that he couldn't even enter a bid. So I'm going to run out of time, but let me tell you, $75 a load times the number of trucks that are going to the landfill is a hell of a piece of change. Then, of course, we have the Parkway West with 35 containers, trucks and cars parked forever, not moving. Who's paying for it? The taxpayer. That's who's paying for it. And we need a new type of leadership in this city. And I intend to do just that. I thank you for your attention, and I'll be back Monday with more.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now continue with our registered speaker, which is Ms. Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Can you hear me now?
You can.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ronald Miller, for your support of Bon Air. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says, "All power is inherent in the people and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted their peace, safety, and happiness." Where did elected officials get the idea that they're lording over us? How can they make decisions for our community that we have lived in and been property owners in for decades? How can Gregory Coyle sit smugly at a town hall meeting in opposition to we the property owners of Bon Air? His response about the parking issue at the building is that the mayor is not going to require it. Is Mayor Paduto his best buddy? No wonder the mayor is on his way out. Our community is not his to make and mold to his will. We, the people of Bon Air, do not consent to this threat to our peace, safety, and happiness. Official oppression has consequences. Significant community concern has been expressed to the Board of Education and City Council all these months since the announcement of the sales agreement for Bon Air School. Perhaps there is a neighborhood busting plan afoot. Blockbusting is illegal. Is there any lobbying or unregistered lobbying taking place? Are any special friends of Bill Paduto involved in this noncompliance sale? My sincere, consistent request is that City Council create a resolution to block zoning change and support of green space to replace Bon Air's school building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat. Reduce watershed to Route 51. Increase green space to benefit all ages and stages. Protect the children at the playground across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have difficult access to nature, the ability to enjoy it. Tear down detrimental problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watersheds to Route 51, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Will Parker.
Hello, everyone. My name is William Parker. Before I get started, I'd like to acknowledge the lives that were stolen from us in the tragic Tree of Life shooting three years ago. And I want the Jewish community, the Black community, Asian community, LGBTQIA community, all communities to know that I stand with them against hate, racism, and all forms of discrimination. Okay, my public comment today has to deal with the grocery store up there on the Hill District in Helman Plaza. I just found out yesterday that there was no RFP put out by the URA. I spoke with Greg Fishroom from the URA. He told me that there was a public RFP put out. I looked on her website. I looked through all her social sites. There wasn't one put out. Lovell, you told me that there was a RFP put out. There wasn't one put out. The Hill District CDC, CDC told me there was one put out. There wasn't one put out. And I think that the Hill District should be outraged knowing this. They had no opportunity to submit their proposals. It seems like this was something that you yourself, Lovell, took your own initiative to find who you wanted to put in this grocery store. You even told me yourself when I seen you down at the city county building, coming off the elevator, you told me you went out of town. You went out of town to try to find operators instead of looking for people right here within the city, right up in the Hill District. That's not leadership, especially from someone who claims that Black Pittsburgh matters. Where's the proof? Here was your chance to prove that. Where is the RFP? I would like to see that. Everyone knows my email, mobilize@voteforwillparker.com. Send it to me. It wasn't put out. That's a disgrace to our community. That's a disgrace to our race. What is going on? That's all I have to say. Have a good day.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone with us wishing to speak before council? Please come forward, provide your name and neighborhood for the record, and you will be given three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live up in the Hill District at KD Werfis Tires. I come today, I'm kind of sad because as up in KD Werfis, I call them my family, and we've had quite a few that has passed. I speak about KD Werfis. Well, Gloria Harbin, who was his main assistant, who gave me one year, I came down with a gavel, and I told the children, because the children do watch this program, that this was the gavel that KD Werfis used whenever he held the meetings. This was here in Pittsburgh. Now she had another gavel, but he used that in Harrisburg when he was up there. She passed. She was a very religious woman. Also in our building, we have Rayford Holden. He passed yesterday. We have Ronald Montel from Claritin. His brother found him dead in their apartment a couple days ago. We have Carol Reynolds. She also passed. That was a lady that would have you laugh, and she was a very nice person. And I wanted to bring out about Anna Burks. Anna Burks lived at 304 in the building. Anna was a CNA, and she would take care of all the people in the building. When I found out that she had fell, Robin came and said she's laying on the floor. We were able to take, I said, pull the string. I know that'll go for them to come and get her. Well, when they took her, she came back, she couldn't talk, but I found out, I didn't know it was that bad, because she came home to die. She knew she was dying, and she wanted to come home. Well, in our building, we have Reverend Brunson. He started a church, and I found out that he came. She couldn't talk, but when she seen him, she was waving and smiling. And when I went to her funeral, I thanked the Reverend, because when I saw her, I started crying. I couldn't pray with her. I do believe that you're in time. You should have someone to face, someone that is praying for you to help you get up to the top. I truly want to tell you that we have a lot of older people up there that you don't seem to care about, but I'm going to keep coming every week that I can possibly come to tell you, to remind you, we're up there. And KD Werfis, see, what I want you to understand, these old politicians knew KD Werfis, and they would fight for him. You younger ones, you might have heard of him, you might even seen him, but I've talked to this man, and this man fought for that building. It's one of the strongest buildings in this United States, made out of steel.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers with us today? Seeing none, we'll move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Yeah.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lovell Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. That takes us to our first committee of the day, which is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. We have one supplemental paper, Bill 2090.
Bill 2090, Resolution Amending Resolution 651 of 2020 to Include Rental Permit Registration Fees in the 2021 Fee Book pursuant to Chapter Code 170.
Oh, still approved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our deferred papers, Bill 1943, which will ask for a motion to hold to run concurrent with all our other pension offset bills.
Bill 1943, Ordinate Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code at Title I, Administrative Article 11, Human Resources, Chapter 192, pensions by adding subsection 19203, 023, so as to add language to allow for elimination of the Social Security offset for municipal employees.
Motion to hold so as 1943 can run concurrent with all other pension offset bills.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There. Opposed? It will be held. That takes us to Bill 1996.
Bill 1996, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 452 of 2020, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with DeForest, Cossetnik, Yokitis, and Baradonelli for professional legal services regarding ethics matters by increasing the total spend by $25,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $70,000.
Motion to hold for executive session?
Second. One second. All those were held yesterday.
Yeah, it says requested, okay. That's a misprint. Bill 1996, 1997, and 1998 are all held yesterday, and we can actually read them together if that.
Bill 1997, Resolution Amending Resolution 372, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Jones, Paso Dillas, for legal services for an employment-related matter before the Human Relations Commission by increasing total spend by $8,019.58 for a not-to-exceed amount of $32,019.58. Bill Number 1998, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Francisco Munen, his attorney, in the amount of $30,000 related to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All three bills, Stephen Affirmative Recommendation, Bill 2053.
Bill 2053, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to accept a donation from Carnegie Mellon University in the amount of $250,000 for the design and construction of playground improvements at Four Mile Run Playground in Greenfield and Lewis Playground in Hazelwood.
Motion approved. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill 2054.
Bill 2054, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Wheels, Inc., in the amount of $6,526.80 in settlement of a claim for damage to a vehicle from the City of Public Works.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill 2055.
Bill 2055, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Charles Reese in the amount of $7,067 in settlement of a claim for damage to a parked vehicle from a city public works vehicle on December 17th of 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. We need a motion to approve the invoices. So moved. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the interdepartmental transfers. So moved. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards. So moved. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor, one new paper, Bill 2056.
Bill 2056, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of the Port Authority of Allegheny County in an amount not to exceed $24,702.50 for transportation services provided for the 2019 City of Pittsburgh, Richard S. Caligari Great Race on September 29th of 2019, and the Great Race on September 26th of 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill, one supplemental paper, Bill 2071.
Bill 2071, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the city and Brighton Heights Citizens Federation in order that the Federation will utilize a part of the first floor of the City of Pittsburgh Building located at 3515 McClure Avenue for temporary storage. The term of the lease shall not exceed 12 months. The agreement shall be in a form approved by the city solicitor.
Motion to approve. Second, brief discussion. I just wanted to thank members for moving this along. It's a timely matter that they find stores until they find a new location or a new strategy on, you know, for their community group. So thanks for helping out this community group. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman President Smith?
I just want to congratulate Councilman Wilson. Every time I turn around, there's something on the agenda for the North Side, and I'm glad my sons would be one of your residents. Although I prefer him be in District 2, I'm glad you're going to take good care of him.
Happy to have him. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 2046.
Bill 2046, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the Shade Tree Commission using funds from the Shade Tree Trust Fund controlled by the Department of Public Works to enter into a corporation agreement for tree-related activities and services with Tree Pittsburgh not to exceed $25,737.69 to enable reimbursement payment to Tree Pittsburgh for work in calendar year 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Let the record reflect that we're joined by Councilwoman Gross, Bill 2047.
Bill 2047, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Green Light Go Grant for the Fiber Network Expansion Project, further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $266,736. The grant requires a match from the city in the amount of $66,684 for a total project of $333,420.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 2048.
Bill 2048, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Green Light Go Grant for the East End Signal Retiming Project, further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $132,000. The grant requires a match from the city in the amount of $33,000 for a total project cost of $165,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill 2049.
Bill 2049, Resolution Amending Resolution 22, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements with the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County to receive grant funding to support Homewood Complete Street Planning Project to increase the amount of grant funding received.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus, one new paper, Bill 2052.
Bill 2052, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 800, which authorized the city to enter into a professional services agreement with UPMC Benefits Management Services for services relating to the administration of the city's worker compensation program pursuant to the Pennsylvania Workers Compensation Act. Pursuant to the Pennsylvania Workers Compensation Act. By increasing the cost by a sum not to exceed three million three hundred fifty thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars. For an additional three years of service.
A motion to approve please.
Second.
Question. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Uh, one first in favor, Bill twenty fifty-seven.
Bill twenty fifty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of city planning. To execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the U.S. Department of Agricultural Natural Resources. Conservation Service Community Compost and Food Waste Reduction Grant Program. To support a municipal composting program feasibility study and further providing for an agreement. And expenditures not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. The grant requires an in-kind match from the city in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, is there someone online that can brief us with this?
I believe so. Sure.
Oh.
Yes.
Sorry, in person.
My name is Afton Giles, I'm the Senior Sustainability Coordinator for the City of Pittsburgh. And I'm on the Department of, um, the Department of Planning, how can I help?
Oh, great.
Do you just want?
Yeah, if you could just give us a general briefing.
Absolutely.
I guess I'm making it worth your time coming to.
Sure.
The council today in person, I appreciate that.
Oh, no problem, you know, we're here on Tuesday, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays right now during COVID season, so.
Hmm.
Um, supposed to be here. Um, so we were able to work with USDA in order to come up with. A plan in order to do community composting in the city of Pittsburgh. Um, the first year is going to be focused primarily on a feasibility study. So that we can look into seeing if it's even a possibility for us, um, in order to do it. Um, we don't foresee us being able to do curbside solution, um, within the near future. So we want to figure out if there's a way that we can somehow work with those people that are already doing composting. And most of the communities in the city of Pittsburgh. And fortify the work that they're already doing so that people can actually. Take the food waste that they're producing and either do some sort of a drop-off service. We're also including education into part of that so that people who have the ability to do backyard composting can better do backyard composting. And we're also working on, um, doing, um. An additional, um, study into all of the different entities. We're working with the University of Pittsburgh as well as PRC during that first year to do, to, to do some research into exactly who's processing waste. In fact, food waste in our, um, and the Pittsburgh region. And actually maybe about ten miles outside of Pittsburgh because we don't exist in a vacuum. Um, it's one of the first times we've had the ability to, um, to do this type of focused research. And it plays into our zero waste plan for the city of Pittsburgh where our goal is to be, um, zero waste by twenty fifty. Um, and that's pretty much what we're doing.
Okay, so you're basically exploring the option for people to, you're basically exploring the option for people to, um, drop off.
To do drop-off composting and to, um, to, to do composting and as well as in their backyards. Um, and we're also working with, um, our city parks and our farmers markets so that we can become, um, hopefully get our farmers markets to be, um, compost ready as well. So that we'll have zero waste from our farmers markets and hopefully zero waste, zero waste from our city parks and our, um, our city parks, uh, programs. Um, so we have Phillips Rec Center that's participating with us and the Homewood Senior Center that'll be participating with us as well. Um, and we're deploying two different solutions. We have a solution for, um, sort of a traditional composting structure, infrastructure at Phillips. Because they have the gardens that are already there, they already have the students that are there. Um, and we have the support team that's there, um, so that we can see how much, we can do, um, a food waste study particularly at that center to see how much. Um, food is, uh, is being, um, is being thrown away after they have, after they serve their meals. Um, and how much we are able to divert from the waste stream. And at the Homewood Senior Center, we're doing, researching a mechanical system that we can use so that hopefully for the same reasons. Um, so that we can hopefully see if we can actually take all of the, the food waste that's produced from those particular programs in city parks, um, out of the waste stream completely, so.
How much, uh, how much education will you be doing? Cause, um, I've had many failed attempts at, uh, composting, it's good. Well, yeah, I guess, I mean, frankly, I, I learned that the worms are the best way to go, so then.
Yep.
And I wasn't gonna go that, that far.
There's a lot of different solutions for it.
I, uh, you know, we, we brought it to a point where it was, you know, it was in our yard, we had those things you spin around. But you're saying we wouldn't have to do that, we could just drop it off and say.
It depends, so that's part of that, that's part of that year's two implementation study to figure out what's gonna be sort of the right, the right place for people. Um, but being able to offer those options and to make them available in a, in a, in a platform where people can say, well, you know, I don't want to do it in my backyard, maybe I do want to drop off. But have a resource that they can turn to to say, hey, these are all the places that I can go to drop off my compost. Um, but say I do have a backyard and I do want to compost, how do I go about doing that? That's part of that same resource where they can say, oh, here's the information right here, this is how I go about doing it. And these are some of the organizations that can help me get that done.
Okay, great, maybe other members have questions, thank you.
Thank you, we have President Smith followed by Gross and Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, I remember when I first moved to District Two and I saw somebody, I grew up on Fifth Avenue. I saw somebody throw something in the ground like for the composting and I thought, what kind of neighborhood did we move to? But anyway, since then I've learned a lot about this from this subject from Councilwoman Gross who has been really instrumental in raising a lot of awareness. And I want to make sure that I shout her out a little bit, uh, for making this council, um, more aware and, and talk about a lot more. Although Councilman Wilson's starting to run a close second on some of this stuff. I know something about that north side with animals, rodents, I don't know. But anyway, um, I do want to thank you for your work, but I want to thank Councilwoman Gross and make sure that we, um, acknowledge that she has done a lot of work in this area. And has been advocating for the city to do more, so I want to thank you for your work too, and thank you, thank you both.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so yes, thank you, Councilwoman Smith. I, um, I've been composting for thirty years, but I also know people who have given up and not been able to do that, right? Yeah, I started in like my twenties, honestly. Uh, because I was in North Carolina and the soil there is all clay. And I was like, started trying to garden and like, you, you can't, no, the roots can't even get through the soil. Um, so you really had to break up the soil. Um, so, um, but yeah, so I have the bin things in my backyard in Highland Park. But I also want to acknowledge so much of what you were saying, and I'm, I'm sorry, I've just blanked out on your name again.
Afton.
Afton?
Yes.
Thank you, Afton, I know that my staff person, Kelsey, has been working with you in your office on this, I'm really enthusiastic to see it. Yes, I did try to add some like thirty thousand dollars to the capital budget a couple of times at council. To start these kinds of composting efforts that failed, so I'm happy to see this, this is ninety thousand dollars. I'm very enthusiastic to support. Um, and, um, but I just wanted to say also for listeners that. There are farmers markets that you can already do this, you can take your kitchen scraps and my constituents do it. I know if you've never heard of this, it might be surprising. Uh, for years, um, now it's been happening at the Bloomfield Farmers Market, I'm not sure if they had it this year. Um, but I know that the Lawrenceville Farmers Market has one of the several companies now that take your kitchen waste. And so you, people bring their kitchen waste to the farmer's market to donate it. You can also, I have constituents who pay.
At East End.
Two different services that will come to your house, pick up your kitchen waste. And then the next week they bring you back like beautiful worm compost and take your kitchen waste again. Um, and so in our urban soils that are especially high with lead. It is not safe for your children to play with them. So Burgess, Councilman Burgess, you may think this is humorous. But it is a terror, it's actually one of our critical problems that we just had a press conference about yesterday. You should not let your children play in soil that is over about four hundred parts per billion lead. We, we have lead poisoned children from our urban soils. Amending the soil. Um, I think I'm not a chemist, right, but it kind of locks the lead so that it is not as ingestible for, for the kids. And it is one of the critical ways to bring down that lead contamination in your soil. Is to amend it, to bring back the humus, to bring back the, what they call it, to bring back the live biological activities in the soil. So there are many, many benefits, I also have many of the community gardens that I support. We actually used our city farms dollars to get them compost bins. So that the farmers could bring their kitchen waste and, and be composting at their community garden site, so we'd love to add those in. And I think Kelsey's been working with you on that, so. It is soil, in fact, is one of the things that we obviously need to raise our awareness at, at city council. So maybe I'll be inviting a post agenda, I'm gonna reach out to, um, the very large network of people doing green infrastructure and green landscaping. Who actually have had an entire two-day conference on urban soils that I attended several years ago. Uh, because it is critically important, not just for lead contamination, not just for growing food, but also for stormwater remediation. If you have, um, compacted, non-active, you know, soil, I'm, I'm not using all of the technically correct words. You get water runoff at a tremendously higher rate, right? So to slow for so many reasons, um, it's an important policy topic. And I still see you laughing over there, so I'm gonna stop talking now.
No, no.
I'll tell you.
Kraus, followed by Councilwoman Schlossberger.
Thank you, very interesting conversation, uh, very interesting. Uh, I'm just curious that, uh, as this progresses, uh, could there, or would, would there possibly be attempts to, um. Uh, educate, uh, food service, commercial food service?
Yeah, we actually, we're already doing that, um, so we have a grant through NRDC Food Matters where we're actually already working with, um, restaurants. Um, and actually, this is a good plug for, um, for our Community Food Service Month, which is actually coming up in November. Um, where we're working with a number of restaurants in order to try to reduce the amount of food that's wasted as well as help them. Triage solutions for how they can, um, get those, those food scraps, um, to not be waste basically. Some of them is food recovery, if it's, if it's food that can actually be eaten. Um, and then the other part of it is actually getting it composted for the things that aren't appropriate to be eaten.
I was gonna narrow the focus on just two specific items because of work that, uh, the Oakland Bid had been doing a number of years ago. Uh, they were collecting or, or programming, I should say, to collect, uh, oil.
Oh, yeah, the food waste.
And number two coffee grounds.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't think that program still exists, but I was just curious what your thoughts might be about even just taking, you know, narrow, narrowly specified. Product for, um, for composting and reuse.
Um, well, the oils are usually sort of processed as a higher use, not as compost, but actually as, I turned into biofuel. Um, that's usually where the, um, the oils are taken in and they're sort of cleaned up and they're able to be, to be generated into a new prod, product. Um, and then the coffee grounds are, they're usually accepted at most composting situations. I know that sometimes too much coffee grounds can actually make the soil too acidic. But, um, I, but in general, it's usually accepted. But, um, this particular study is a little bit more holistic so that we can sort of create that, that resident database. So that they're able to figure out where they can take their things on either residential scale or a small commercial scale. So that's the database and that's some of the information that we should be able to come with after that first year study. But there is, um, there's a lot of different solutions, including biodigestion, um, you know, and it just all depends on what the waste is. After it's, after it's, you know, served its initial purpose, basically. Um, so we sort of have a hierarchy of waste in like the waste industry, basically where, you know, food that can be eaten should be eaten. And then, you know, after the food that's been eaten, you know, has been consumed, then you have the option to, um, to scrap it to make compost. And if it's not compost appropriate, because depending on where you're composting, they don't accept everything because of the, the type of pile that they might be, um, sort of shepherding. Um, it can also usually be used or as a last resort as, as biofuel basically, which is turned into pretty, like a green energy source, basically. Um, and there are some people that are doing some biodigestion in our region, none that are specifically in the city of Pittsburgh. But I think there are some that are like right outside of the city Pittsburgh that are doing biodigestion.
So just one last question, uh, and you brought it up, uh, I didn't think of this terminology exactly, but the hierarchy of order. Is there a, a way that, uh, if I wanted to start to do this where I could actually find what is the best product to compost and things to stay away from and?
Um.
Information like that?
Yeah, certainly, um, all that information is, is in some way, shape or form already sort of existing. Some of it's actually on our own, um, DPW site for our, um, you know, our, our own DPW website, we have like sort of that hierarchy. Already spelled out in some of the literature that's there online. Um, we also, um, work very closely with Pennsylvania Resource Council, um, uh. I can't think of what their name is, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm spacing there in, um, they're in Homewood on Larmour, um, oh, Hamilton. Uh. I can't think of their name as right now, sorry. No, no, not Penn State extension, they do some really good work with that too and, and also have that research, um. Oh, grounded, they used to be grounded, um, they changed their name though. Um, and I can't think of what their new name is right now. Um, but there, there are a number of organizations that are sort of specialists in this field and all of them do have, um, you know, some, some research and some really good literature. But we want to make sure that it's all, um, sort of codified and collected in a really nice neat place where they can find it on our city, um, you know, through our city resources.
Thank you, happy to support, thank you very much.
Awesome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schlossberger.
Thank you. Um, I'm really enthusiastic about this because of everything that we've already discussed and other council members have asked about. Um, I guess my, my only question is, well, I have a couple of questions. One big picture, I know that this is a pilot and we're trying out a lot of different methods. It's the, at senior and rec centers and drop-off locations. What are we driving toward? I mean, in the ideal world, would it look like, um, weekly pickups from our own city environmental services? Similar to waste and recycling? Would it, would it be drop-off centers? Would it, what would it look like in the ideal world if we could work through all of the sort of red tape and bureaucracy and the difficulties of, um, that come with this? What would it, what would the ideal situation look like? Um, I'm just curious if we have an idea, or if we don't have an idea, what is, um, what are we seeking to find out from this pilot?
Right, so there is the ideal situation where a lot of residents would really like to do a program, sort of like maybe New York and some of the other larger cities. Where they're able to have a green bin, take it outside and put it on the curb and have it picked up every week or every other week, like they do recycling your waste. Um, that's, we don't foresee that being a reality for the city of Pittsburgh in any of the near term. Maybe that's maybe like a twenty-year plan or something like that. But what can we do right now and what we hope to accomplish at the end of this? Is to actually fortify a lot of the organizations that are already doing this and a lot of the entrepreneurs that are already working in this space. And making sure that, um, they're able to reach a customer base so that they can, um, you know, move a lot of their startups and, and, and. Being able to offer their services to the city, to city residents, so it can have a market-based solution. Um, so what the city, what we're hoping to do as a city is to help the community organizations that are already doing this. And help them to be able to figure out if they're able to take it to scale. Maybe work with them to fix some of the kinks that are maybe happening in their program so that they can take it to scale. Um, so that people don't have to have their waste trucked, but can walk hopefully down the street. If they can't produce it, if they can't, um, transition it in their backyard, doing a backyard compost solution. Or they don't have the time, they don't have the means, they can sort of not have to really leave their community in order to be able to drop off their waste and have that processed. Um, or, you know, if they do have the means, they can have somebody come and pick it up for them. So we're trying to create a solution, um, where the city is able to help to improve. I guess the marketability and look at compost as being a commodity basically. Um, so that businesses are able to grow in our region and people are able to, um, to, to build better soil in some shape or form.
Okay, so like a fishing net sort of approach where there are a lot of different entities, nonprofit, for-profit, the city all working together to, to, to fill the gaps. Um, and capture that, that's great. I, I also think of our Christmas tree recycling or, uh, drop-off centers as a huge success. It's grown over the years to allow for people to not, as you say, not have to leave their neighborhood to be able to drop off their Christmas trees and have them turned into. Um, into woodchips that then are, I think, both used by the city but also available for the public, so that seems like a great model as well. I, uh, have another specific question and then just a final comment. My specific question is, as we're working to, um, cut down on the amount of plastic that is produced and is used. A lot of people are, and a lot of businesses are turning toward compostable items. That should be able to, you know, be composted rather than thrown away and added to our landfills. So cutlery, plates, you know, and if we're also as a city in our special events that we're hosting or going towards, driving towards that as well. So we can make our, our, our own, um, events that we're sponsoring zero waste, you know, that's probably gonna be a piece of this. Does this pilot take that into consideration? I know, no, those aren't always, uh, as successful as people think because they get this and then they find out later those things are not actually compostable in their backyard. They have to go to a special composting, um, like industrial composting site. Are we helping to address that in this pilot or is that something further done?
No, no, absolutely, um, so we're addressing it, um, at our farmers markets specifically. Um, so we'll be able to work with the vendors, so we have, actually have two, um, farmers markets that are already, city-sponsored farmers markets that are already accepting, um. Come, that are already accepting food scraps from the community in the north side farmers market and the east Liberty farmers market. So we're working specifically with those. So we're working specifically with those farmers markets to increase those efforts. Um so we'll be spending this first year working with the the food vendors that are specifically at those farmers markets that sell um sort of to-go food, fast food, in order to um with, working with um this particular grant as well as NRDC and um in order to figure out the right type of um containers, we'll be able to trial a couple of different things at all of those different vendors um and work with um a composter to be determined. Um I have a couple of ideas in mind as to who it possibly will be, but we're, we want to make sure that it's fair for all the people that are in that space to be able to work with us and to um have the opportunity to um to to try to work with us so that we can um identify the right types of containers that will be able to be accepted and processed on the back end. Because as you said, some of those plastics, you find out um after you buy them, they're supposedly compostable, but there's actually different levels of compostable materials. And those plastics don't really break down that well and a lot of them have to be commercially composted in a way where the piles get hot enough in order to break down those plastics and it takes a lot longer to do it. So we will be doing an evaluation of some of those materials and working with actual food vendors to find out, you know, the appropriate materials that work for them. Um and that'll also be part of what, part of the resources and the information that we find out from the study that we can also be able to share with the rest of the city of Pittsburgh. So we'll know what works in terms of a practicality and we'll also know what works in terms of being able to break down in those compost piles. So this is definitely, that's definitely something that's gonna be a part of um part of this first year research.
Perfect. Uh my final comment, no need to respond unless you have and you're inspired to do so, but I, this is a great example of the circular economy that we're driving towards or that we should be driving towards, meaning, you know, everything has a purpose and it's uh being, it's it's actually in a cycle, right? So um nothing is wasted and we are reusing and recycling as much as humanly possible to benefit our environment and to create jobs. That is a job creator, as it's sort of been alluded to um throughout this discussion. So for those who continue to think that economy and jobs is at opposition uh to our, you know, protecting our environment and our earth, that this is a great example of one that um of why that is not necessarily true. So I'm really supportive. Um I am grateful to um to you, Afton, for your work on this and council colleagues for for supporting this and I'll continue to support as well.
Thank you very much. Uh Councilman Burgess.
First of all, Afton, I want to congratulate you on your work. And um you are from where?
Homewood.
Where are you from?
Homewood.
And your parents live where?
Homewood.
So I am, I am, I am proud both as your friend and um representing your family in this effort. Um I support it and it is right. But I'm an old man. And every now and then, council will say something that will remind me of my youth. Uh Councilwoman Gross talked about, she's been doing composting for thirty years. I, both of my parents went to heaven since I've been a member of council. When she mentioned the thirty years, it reminded me of my family and my my mom and dad. I grew up in a very different time than this. I grew up in a time when I came home from school to eat lunch. I walked home every day from school and ate lunch at my house and then went back to school. I lived in a different time. My, 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 there actually, there actually were families in Homewood that had horses and they were, they had alternative income. And they would ride their horses in the sixties, dressed up, dressed up as cowboys. And they would ride horses down Frankstown. They would ride horses. They would ride horses. Down in the sixties, these men of alternative income would drive horses, ride horses down Homewood Avenue and Frankstown Avenue and Penn Avenue. I grew up with this. So um watch, be careful what you say, because there's some truth in it. So, so I grew up in a, in a, in the household and I was laughing really because thinking of my parents. My mother never worked. My father was the breadwinner and he worked a regular job. And then on that same job, he worked overtime every day. So he worked somewhere like seventy hours a week to take care of us.
Those were the days.
My mother, and that's, this is the part that made me, was amusing to me. My mother would not allow garbage in the house, period. When you had, when you ate food, every night, the garbage had to go out. And back in those days, we had the metal cans. I'm I'm old now, I'm telling you. We had these metal cans that Public Works would come pick up. And my mother, every day, you could not, she would not allow garbage to be in her house overnight. My father was a fisherman, an avid fisherman, decent fishing. I used to fish as a, up until my twenties with him. And um we would use worms, right? Because you mentioned worms, you mentioned worms. But my mother would not allow worms in the house. He couldn't store them in the house, he couldn't. He had to put them in old coffee cans and put them in the back of the yard, back in those days. Back in those days, we had, my yard, my mother had flower trees, we had an apple tree, we had grape. We had a hothouse. The house that she had bought had a hothouse where they had, the person before her had had raised seedlings. And so when you began talking about composting and the worms, I, my mind went back to my parents and what they would think. And 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 this would be so foreign to every, trust me on this one. Trust me on this one. Trust me on this one. This, 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 this uh ultra-modern couple from Homewood, composting and everything about it would be so foreign to their, to their sensibility. And so as the more you talk, the more I thought about my parents. And that idea just tickled me if they were here today to hear this conversation with their reaction would be. I am not laughing at the issue because the issue's right. But 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 and and Afton, you grew up in Homewood, so you you know the kind of hopeful, I think you know the kind of families I'm talking about, right? This, this would, if having this conversation in Homewood with certain families, where you have a very different, although they'll be very kind about it, right? The reception would be somewhat curious. And that's what tickled me, the more I thought about mommy and daddy in this conversation, um the more it tickled me. And so you excuse me for having, as an old man, having these moments of reverence for my parents every now and then, and more so now that I've gotten older. Now, so I'm in, you know, now that I'm getting older, they they they, I see them every day now, right? Before, um they would come to me every now and then. And now mommy and daddy come to me every day and I see them now all the time. I see them, I see me and my children, I see my parents in me. So excuse me for that moment, but that's, that's what I actually was thinking. I figured I'd cheer.
You're freaking me out, okay?
I see, I see them. I don't, I see them. I see them.
But I I love the conversation, if I if I can add. Um because I think that some of that is the types of conversation that we're gonna have to have in order to have people really be on board with doing this. Um and that's the type of education and type of backgrounds that we're gonna have to take into consideration when we're having those conversations. Um and I think, you know, maybe we might be able to convince your mom that this might be a really good idea, um if, you know, she was able to have a little container to put her food scraps in and then every day, you know, her kids take it to the backyard and took it outside, which means that there's no smell in the house. It means that, you know, it would go out every single day, it would go to a higher use and it would help to make those um guard, those screens in her hothouse grow even better over time. So I think that those are the types of ways that we have to take in that information and use it and create the right education and resource materials in order to to get the support that we have for doing this community-wide.
Thank you. Councilman Kargil.
Thank you. Afton, first of all, thank you for being here. You know, you're you're really in the know of what you do. You seem to be a real student of the process. And um, you know, if I didn't have confidence in it beforehand, I do now, I'm listening to you. So, so, so you're really great. Uh I knew this was right in Councilwoman Gross's wheelhouse, you know, and um uh, you know, I've many conversations with her. She speaks of a family of four and she has a little plastic garbage at the end of the, because she composts. And I thought, well, isn't that great? Um I think, I don't know if you reuse it in your own, you know, uh planting or or fertilization, but uh but so, but the the real idea here is the rich soil that you're creating.
Yes.
As much as landfill occupancy, right?
Well, we want to take it out of landfill and use it for its highest purpose, which is to build our soils for all the reasons that were pointed out. Um we know that the most vulnerable people tend to live in the most vulnerable spaces and that lead poisoning is a very real, real concern of ours. And that was actually one of the pinnacles that the grant was placed upon is the health concern that we have for having subpar soils in the city of Pittsburgh in particular. Because we have high and high, very, very higher than normal levels of lead in our soils and we also have very um bad, uh it's not bad, but it's clay soil, really heavy clay soil, to the point where most community gardens have to have raised beds and truck in soil from from other, you know, big box places in order to fill it up. And then um, you know, and to use it, they can't just dig a hole in the backyard in a lot of our communities and actually start planting. And if they do plant it, they don't know that the food that they're consuming from those soils actually has lead in in the food that they're producing because bad soil produces bad food. So.
And I'm, I'm really glad, you know, that Councilwoman Gross mentioned city farms too. It's a area where, you know, she has a lot of planters and growers who would love this rich soil for whatever they're they're growing or fertilizing. Councilman Wilson, I know you have a hard time selling the the beautiful worm compost, as Councilwoman Gross put it at home, but I, you know, I think you should just dive in, uh you know, all the way.
I wasn't willing to go. Uh they have these towers that you stack up. They get red wigglers and I was like, nah, I just kept creating sludge. And I said, this is not on far enough.
That's funny, that's funny. And and, you know, Councilwoman Burgess, I remember when the garbage uh used to come with her burlap sacks in the backyard. Right. You know, um so uh, so we both go back and ways like that. And to, you know, Councilwoman Schlossberger, what you said about compost, if we can get plastics into some sort of compostable, is that a word? I don't know, compostable, thank you. Um you know, where where that can also go into fertilizer. Well, then we really knock it out of the park. But I love that it's a really, two real main purposes is landfill plus creating this beautiful soil that um, pumpkins is big, I guess. Okay, that's it. No, thank you, Afton. I just really wanted to acknowledge you and and your, you know, your knowledge in this, in this field. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Clearly, maybe we should be not taking up all of a a busy agenda. I was overly enthusiastic about compost, but um you, uh council members might also recall that for, it feels like about four years now, every time we have our budget hearings on the Equipment Leasing Authority and have to talk about our garbage haulers, right, our waste haulers, that, you know, we know the fleet is horribly old. We know that they get three miles per gallon, three miles per gallon diesel on those garbage trucks that come by your house. And when it's full, it drives fifteen miles out to either Westmoreland County or Washington County and then drives back again. When we did our climate action plan, we identified that the particulate matter that is spewing out of those decades-old terrible trucks that we make our workers drive is one of our highest concerns for air pollution. And every year in the budget hearing for the Equipment Leasing Authority, I say, do you know that if we composted, um did municipal composting, and I have visited cities that do weekly pickup for composting, it can cut down the way you measure how many miles your trucks are going every week is vehicle miles traveled. It can cut that in half. That's half the particulate matter, that's half of the stupid wasted labor time driving back and forth from the landfill, that's half of the fees we're paying, we're paying at the landfill. And that's half of the miles on that fleet. Imagine cutting down the amount of money we spend on those waste haulers in half. So that's the scale that we can reach. Um about seven years ago, I visited some friends in Tacoma, Washington. And when we were finished with our first meal there, we we walked outside to the porch to put our garbage outside, not inside. It had this beautiful municipal tall bins with the flap lid and the wheels. And there was a green one and a brown one. I can't remember which one was the compost, but we scraped our entire, even cooked food, which you don't do in backyard composting now. We do, you know, just like um orange peels, banana peels and things like that. But like the cooked food crab legs, because we were all on the west coast, you know, into this, the bin, it got picked up weekly. The compost, the food waste bin, big bin, got picked up weekly. The bin next to it that was garbage only got picked up every other week. So you never put food scraps in the garbage can. Um and it's much smaller. And as Councilwoman Wilson said, I can really attest, just in our own household with four, four people and two dogs now, that every week when we put our kind of garbage out, it's much, much smaller than our neighbors now going on for about twenty years since we've had kids. So um it really does significantly come down on just the the literal, the the weight and the bulk of waste at each household.
And not, in fact, I can also add, not only is it the truck waste, but it's also the manpower as well that goes into it. You know, our DPW people are some of the hardest working people in in the world. And um, you know, and if trash wasn't picked up, certain people would certainly notice that it was a missing service that we provide. Um but somebody has to pick up all that heavy weight and they have to dump it, you know, into that truck and they have to do it again at the next house and the next house and the next house until they reach all the houses in the city of Pittsburgh. Um getting rid of that bulk and getting rid of that weight, which usually is attributed a lot to the wetness, you know, in the bulk of the food waste, would certainly, I'm sure, help them in terms of like workman's comp issues and things like that that we have to deal with with our employees because that means that it's it's less strain and it's less weight and it's left heft on them. And one of the other problems that we have in the city of Pittsburgh is also our streets are very narrow. So having some of the more um, the really cool technology where they have the arms that can reach over and just like pick up the stuff by itself and dump it in, just for some of our communities, this is not um feasible because you can barely fit a car down the street in some of them. So, you know, so at some point, we're always, we're always gonna have that manual labor component to having to pick it up by hand and dump it until they figure out a way to have a smaller truck that can get down our streets. So it also helps them out as well to try to get some of the stuff out of our waste stream so that it can help to, you know, lighten their load, literally.
And and obviously to support the circular economy is to avoid the extractive economy, right? And so not having to mine for more resources, not having to increase our use of fossil fuel because there's literally enough in circulation that we should be actually just recycling, but we don't recycle. Um and so we have to cut down our plastics in order to avoid the extractive economy. So that'll be, that'll be it for.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 You oppose? The bill is recommended. Thank you very much for the education this morning. Um Bill twenty sixty.
Bill twenty sixty, witness amending the Pittsburgh Code Title VII Business License in Article Ten Residential of Rental, uh Residential Housing, Chapter Seven Eighty-One, Residential Housing Rental Permit Program to change the fee for rental permit registration so as to reflect current practices in accordance with Chapter One Seventy Fees.
Uh motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Question, Councilman?
Thank you. So this bill is striking the um the fee, the amounts. Oh, I'm sorry, this is the Rental Registry uh Legislation that everyone, like everyone here has worked on before my time and appreciate this because this was, this is gonna be um very important as we move forward with legislation was introduced yesterday uh to reduce lead poisoning in children. And so this, this item here is here because we're gonna strike this. And it, and it relates to Bill twenty ninety and that was um a supplemental paper introduced earlier that we already voted on, which puts the fees in the fee schedule. I know the Director Kinther is on the line if anyone has any questions, but from my understanding, this is, this is a piece of the puzzle uh to move it to the finish line.
I do.
Councilman Kraus followed by Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah. Hi, Sarah.
Good morning.
Welcome. Do you have a brief presentation you wish to make? I do have just a a couple of brief questions, but.
Uh thanks for asking. I can just provide a really quick overview if that would be helpful.
Yes.
Great. Um so I think many of you are aware that Commonwealth Court found that the previous fee proposed and hardcoded into the legislation was disproportionate to the cost of. was disproportionate to the cost of executing the rental registration program. So following that ruling, this past summer, PLI worked with the folks that helped create the city's fee study and fee schedule to revisit the fee. We looked at the average costs to intake of the registration application and to have our inspectors travel and perform inspections. And we are proposing in the 2021 fee schedule that you passed earlier this morning, a fair fee. And to address the, the issues that came up during, during the lawsuit.
So the Third Council District, a number of years ago, had surpassed the 50% rental market throughout the entire district. Now, the district includes Southside Flats, South Oakland, Central Oakland Hilltop Neighborhoods. It, this, the, the, the Rental Registry is the passage and implementation of the Rental Registry is absolutely imperative to quality of life and safe living conditions within the Third Council District. I had a very brief discussion with Council, or former Councilman, now Chief of Staff Gilman, about absolutely supporting the bill. But I have one minor reservation, and that is the reduction of fee still being a fee. And that we go back to court another time and we spend two years to come back to having a court say, no, it's too much. So I think the fee, do we have an amount that the fee is being reduced to? Is it something like $13 or something? Or I might be wrong. I apologize.
No worries. That's a, a great question. So what we did is we looked at our cost to the department to perform this work, just like we do with all of our other fees. So we looked at how much does it cost for us to take in an application? How much will it, is the average cost for an inspector to travel to a location? And how much would it cost to perform this type of inspection based on the checklist? So the fee includes an application intake of $16. And then it includes an inspection fee that include, that covers the cost of travel at $5.50 plus $14 times the number of units to inspect the units. So that is, that's the fee. And one thing that I think is important to call out is the ordinance states that if a unit passes inspection, it is eligible to renew their rental registration permit at half the normal applicable fee. And units that pass with 100% are required to be inspected only once every five years. So for those units that do pass inspection, they would only pay the application intake fee at, that is halved, so $8, until it is inspection time again.
Each year.
Each year, correct. So that is very different from the 65, 55, 45 sliding scale fee that required payment each year. And that is the reason why we split the application intake fee versus the inspection costs.
This is a little radical, and I don't mean to suggest it, but you, you know, I've been here 14 years. The entire time I've been here, I've served with then Councilman Paduto, now Mayor Paduto. And this has been a topic of, of conversation, and we have struggled to pass a rental registry in the city. And damn it, this time, we're going to do it. We, we, it's imperative that we do this. And, and it might sound a little radical, but I'm of the school of thought that we, if it came to it, I would be willing to support to go out to do it without any fee assigned to it whatsoever, so that no court could strike it down. And then after doing it for a year, we could prove a cost, a burden of, of implementing that program. And, and then I dare a court to overturn when we have proof that we've done it, we've experienced it. We have records of exactly what it costs to do it. And I can't imagine that any court would overturn it. I'm going to support this, and I applaud you and the Paduto Administration for the, for the tenacity to keep this ever alive and ever present. It, it is the topic of conversation every time I'm in South or Central Oakland. There, there is no bigger conversation that we have. So I'm happy to support. I wish us all the, the, the best in it. I understand law has reviewed. And Slistra Hilton feels that we can, can clearly defend this if it were, were to be challenged, that we would be okay with it. So I'm happy to support it and we'll never let it go. We will never, ever let this go until it happens. And, and, and one last thing, as long as I'm on a soapbox, I feel like Councilman Burgess right now. The, our, our, our biggest enemy in this process has been the Realtors Association. And they have, they have fought us tooth and nail on every, every attempt to, to do a rental registry. And it boggles my mind, just absolutely boggles my mind that the organization would wish people to live in units that are not safe, that are not up to code, and that present a clear and present danger to the people that inhabit them. And it's, it's just shameful. The end. Thank you. Appreciate it. And I'm going to support today. I may have comments later.
Thank you. I also want to applaud Director Kinter and the administration and the Law Department for going through and, and fighting for this legislation that we introduced now. I can't even remember what year it was, 2017? Did we pass it? Maybe before that, 2016? 2016. So we know we need this. And just a reminder to the public, we have discovered thousands and thousands of units that are out of compliance and almost unlivable, right? We have had, single landlords have hundreds and hundreds of units that people shouldn't be living in. The city currently doesn't have a list of apartments. And so cannot put them on an inspection schedule. And so cannot guarantee the living standards that people are living in. I think as a city, we're over half renters, right?
Could be.
So, and it might have gone up. I don't think we have the current data from 2021. I, I do believe it's higher. I mean, I represent, you know, Bloomfield, the last census was at 65% renters. And we talked about this, we talked about rental registry, and we talked about the Housing Opportunity Fund. And we need to know where all those units are. We need to be able to put them on an inspection schedule. It is a public health issue. It is one of our core city powers to do. This is the tool to do it. And we hope that the courts will support us in this very important policy work and not entertain another challenge to the legislation. And Director Kinter, you may know offhand, I've forgotten how many municipalities in the, in the state of Pennsylvania already have rental registries and just people, they, all the landlords pay their annual fee and are on an inspection schedule. Do you know offhand?
I do not know offhand, but several jurisdictions have passed this in the state of Pennsylvania.
We know in Allegheny County, there are municipalities with rental registries just like this. And the sky did not fall, but I'm sure those apartments across that municipality are in much better condition than the ones in the city of Pittsburgh. So I'm, I'm, I'm also very, very grateful to seeing this finally come to fruition, we hope. And especially because, as we talked about this week, we need to begin to proactively inspect for deteriorated lead paint and protect our children proactively from lead poisoning instead of inspecting after they are already poisoned, which is what the current system is today. So let's, let's, let's hope this is not challenged in court and we can begin to prevent lead poisoning. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I will believe for the point. We need this. We need this to succeed in, in court and we need this to pass. And for the sake of our ongoing legal argument, I will say, I support the fee as well. A lowered fee is fine, but I know that we, we need to be able to sustain this program. And so we need a fee to be able to make that happen. It can't be on the backs of a, a new tax on unrelated taxpayers or whatever the source might be for funding this program. If we're going to, if we're going to hire new inspectors, if we're going to train inspectors appropriately, we do need a funding source to come through that. And that's going to have to be a fee. And this fee sounds incredibly, incredibly fair and, and really minimal. I mean, in my mind, if you are the owner of a rental property, you are a business owner in the city of Pittsburgh. And you're not taxed as such. So a minimal fee to ensure that if your, if your properties are in great working order and they're incredibly safe for the residents, this should not affect you. And for those who have neglected their properties to such an extent that they will have to make major renovations, well, maybe they need to get out of the business of actually owning rental properties in the city of Pittsburgh. And hopefully it will have a chilling effect on that, those kind of property owners in the future. So Director Kinter, I know that you are currently carrying the baton in this long, long relay race. And I'm really appreciative to you for the work that you've done and that PLI has done and the mayor's office. And really everyone who's been involved in this effort and our, our law department, everyone who's been in this effort along the way. So thank you. I'm in full support, but I want a fee. I do want to support a fee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, bill is recommended. That takes us to our Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. We have one deferred paper, Bill 521.
Bill 521, Resolution repealing, amending and reenacting Resolution Number 18 of 1983 effective January 20th, 1983, titled, Resolution authorizing and directing the Bureau of Cable Communications, Department of Public Works, broadcast all of council's regular legislative sessions, standing committee meetings, setting forth the responsibilities of the Department of Innovation and Performance with respect to meetings of city council and to reflect various changes in the city's departmental organization structure and other changes to reflect technological innovation since 1983.
I will defer to the bill sponsor.
Motion to hold four weeks.
All those in favor say aye.
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 It will be held four weeks. That moves us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first bill is Bill 1852.
Bill 1852, Resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title and interests, if any, in, into the publicly owned property in the 20th Ward of the city designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, Council District Number Two, Sufferr Avenue, southwest side of Sufferr Avenue of Sherwood Avenue.
Motion to approve a discussion? I am going to look up a number on my phone, so forgive me for a minute. I just wanted to acknowledge that this is the entirety of the 626 acres. That is our now kind of new, I think, largest part.
That's the next bill.
Yeah.
We read Bill 1852, which should have been under your committee.
Right. Okay. Sufferr. Got it. All right. So I'll just motion to approve that one.
No, no, can I? Okay. Second.
Not.
With discussion.
Discussion. Apologies.
Thank you. I'd like to hold it actually indefinitely because it's for parcels and shared in the URA said for future development. But I'm not going to just start putting land away, not knowing what the development's for.
Thank you. I'm totally supportive. Motion to hold, how many weeks? Two weeks?
Yeah, maybe four weeks. I don't know.
Four weeks.
There's no plan. There's no, at least not that's being shared with us.
Motion to hold four weeks.
Oh, four weeks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, it will be held four weeks. That takes us to Bill 2081.
Bill 2081, Resolution approving execution of a deed by and between the URA and the city for the seller Block 31G, Lot 200 in the 31st Ward and Lot 100 in the 16th Ward, Hayes Woods, Council District Number Five.
So this one is a motion to approve a discussion?
A second, very brief discussion.
Yes, I am now on the right bill for Hayes Woods. And what I, the notes I have in front of me is this is the entirety of the 626 acres that was donated by a landowner, but received by the URA, but is, is intended to be our newest, very, very large, I'm not sure if it's the largest, city park. And so this is us receiving it as the city from the URA.
Or the racetrack was supposed to be.
Yes, yes. In the South Hills, I believe it's officially Councilman O'Connor's district. So I'm going to say kind of near page Dairy Mart, like those, those big green hills. Those big green hills up there that have been undeveloped. And yes, going back way before my time on council, there was some prospecting and visions of a casino and racetrack, right? Very big, some of the gambling permits.
Yeah.
Instead, was donated to the city of, well, indirectly, right? Meant for, to be a donation to the city of Pittsburgh, but kind of was held by the URA for a few years. And now this is us receiving it. Councilman Kraus, did you have questions?
No, I don't. No, I'm good. My support. Thank you.
Can you stop holding? Okay, thank you. Council President?
Thank you. And I just want to thank everyone for working on this. But I really want to say that this is a project that Mayor Paduto is extremely proud of. And so I think in, in his term, he talked about this being one of the things that he's most pleased that, that he's accomplished. So I want to make sure that we give him a lot of acknowledgement on this one. Thank you, Councilwoman, for moving it along.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll simply add that this is also a reason to provide the URA with resources so we can do unique projects such as this. All those in favor say aye.
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 You oppose, bill is recommended. Our last bill is Bill 2051.
Bill 2051, Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the proposed Southside Works Apartment Building Project located at 2613 South Water Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Need discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, bill is recommended. That does exhaust our agenda for today. This, we do have some meeting announcements this afternoon at 1:30. Council will hold a post-agenda discussion on the residential parking permit program as relates to Council Bill 1867. Also this afternoon at 4:30 PM, the School Board Reapportionment Advisory Committee will hold their meeting in this city stats conference room on the sixth floor. And next week, due to the general election, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Monday, November 1st at 10 AM and 1:30 PM. To register for these meetings, use the registration form on the city council meeting schedule webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Registration closes at 9 AM for the regular meeting and 12:30 PM for the standing committee. Anything from members? Council President Smith?
Thank you. A while back, Councilwoman Gross had called for a post-agenda on Wilkinsburg, but it was canceled. So I'm going to call for another post-agenda and public hearing. And we'll work together on scheduling some of those. So I have a motion for a post-agenda and public hearing regarding Wilkinsburg.
Regarding the potential.
Potential.
Annex.
Anexation of Wilkinsburg. Thank you. Motion is second.
Second it. All those in favor say aye.
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 We'll work with the clerk to get those scheduled.
Thank you. And I also want to mention that I met with the Food Policy Council yesterday and discussed ways that, that we might be able to work together with council members. And so I want to form two task forces, because I, one of the things I think we keep talking about is better accountability with the nonprofits. And so I'm going to form two task forces, one to work with the food groups, not just the Food Policy Council, Food Bank, others that may not be included. A task force of some of those members and the council members in the mayor's office and budget folks, so that we can figure out that. But the other task force will be some, to draft something to hold nonprofits in more accountable in the city. So I have some idea of who I'd like to put on which committee, but if members have something they prefer, please let me know before next Tuesday when I announce it. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman, sorry.
I'm sorry. There's someone else who was before me. That's fine.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Thank you. I just, we, I think we all know today is the third commemoration of the synagogue shooting in Squirrel Hill. And the, the day that so many lives were changed, 11 of our friends and neighbors were, were murdered and were taken from us. And wanted to acknowledge that, that the community is still healing, that we are still fighting this war against hate. still fighting, um, this war against hate and antisemitism and racism and xenophobia in our country and that we need to be there for one another. Um, I also just wanted to make sure, well, first, I know that and acknowledge that, you know, you as council colleagues, uh, we're all in this together. We're all, uh, standing shoulder to shoulder in this fight and in this effort, um, in many different ways and along with the mayor's office as well. Uh, I wanted the community to know that there are commemoration events being, um, held today, starting at 4:30 with a, an actual commemoration in Shenley Park near Prospect Drive. And you can find information at 1027 Healing Partnership online. Um, but the kind of community events will begin as early as 3 PM. So, um, everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else from members? If not, need a motion to excuse the asset member. Um, approve the minutes and adjourn meeting.
Should I move?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Meeting is adjourned. Excuse me.